Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We're calling to order a regular meeting of the Jackson City Council, Jackson, Mississippi, February the 11th, 2025, at 10:01 a.m., here in council chambers. Joining us today is Pastor Cedric Crump of New McRaven Hill Missionary Baptist Church, which is in Ward 4. Welcome, Pastor. If you would please go to the mic, make sure the green light is turned on, and lead us in the invocation. Following the invocation, I'm going to ask Mr. Foot if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Let us pray. Gracious in heaven, Father, we come once again in total and humble prayer. Father God, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity. We thank you for the gift of life right now. Father God, right now, we lift up this city. We lift up her residents. Father God, we lift up this council, the constituents that they represent, Father God. And right now, we just ask that your will be done during this meeting. Father God, that all decisive attitudes be checked at the door, Father God, and that the citizens of this city be put on priority, Father God. We ask that the business be conducted in an efficient and productive manner, Father God, and that you give us peace at the end of this meeting. It's in the precious and holy name of Jesus we do pray. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor, and thank you, Mr. Foot. All right, colleagues, we're going to go ahead and open it up for any introductions or announcements. And by the way, we have five of us here on the dais, and Mr. Hartley is joining us online today. Good morning, Mr. Hartley. All right?
Good morning, Madam President.
Thank you. Any announcements?
Madam President?
Yes.
I just wanted to quickly thank Reverend Crump for coming in and offering the prayer today. When I was a teacher at Murr, he was a student. And when I taught at Forest Hill, he was a colleague in the same department. And he's a longtime educator, a family man, and I'm really proud of him and thankful for him. All right, there he is waving. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Griselle.
Madam President?
Yes, sir. Mr. Hartley?
Yes, I'd like to open the meeting in remembrance of Miss Mother Carrie Lee Mitchell Magnum. She's one of our street captains here in the Country Park Neighborhood Association. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley. Anything else? All right, colleagues, we have several public comments today. We don't have a public hearing, so we're going to move right into public comments. So all of you, let's see, we've got Reginald Davis, William J. McWilliam, Mary Jackson, Thomas Cheatham, Lee Bernard, and Reverend Ernest Smith. And if all of you could just make your way to this wall to save time today, please remember that you're only allowed three minutes, and the clerk of council will give you a sign when your time is coming to a close, and then a final sign when your time is up, and that we ask that you be particularly respectful of that, of three minutes. And colleagues, unless it is absolutely necessary, I am not going to allow comment today because it is incredibly hot in the room, and we know that our constituent services department will respond to these concerns. All right, Reginald Davis, please make sure the mic is on. It will have a green light. And state your name for the record when you get to the podium. All right, is Reginald Davis here? All right, William J. McWilliam. William J. McWilliam. All right, Mary Jackson. Okay, please come forward, Ms. Jackson, and welcome, and we're glad you're here. And also, Alice Tisdale, in parentheses for some reason. Okay?
Well, I'd like to say good morning, City Council members. My name is Mary Jackson. I was here about 10 months ago. I got my car totally lost over at Battlefield Park, and I'm here because I'm not getting no results. You know, Attorney Morton, he promised he'd go, he helped me, but he's not helping me to get paid. He's just saying that I'm checking on it, you know. And I'm here today because I received a letter from the water, water place, and it said that they was going to arm my bay or my vehicle, but I still hadn't heard anything yet. It seemed like it just, they just kicking it down the road, kicking it down the road. So that's the reason why.
Speaking on behalf of the Jacksons, most of you are familiar with the case. And it's like if you're going to the store, and you talk to the store clerk, and you get no action, what do you do? You ask for the store manager. You all are our store manager, and we cannot even get the name of the attorney for Jackson Water or a viable phone number to follow up on this claim. Now, it may seem small to you, but this is their livelihood, and they have taken an old truck to try to repair, and we have paid for most of those repairs for them so that they can have some way to get around town. Now, this is just ridiculous. And we want the name of the Jackson Water attorney, and we want their phone number, direct phone number, to get this issue resolved.
Okay, thank you. We, I do not know who that person is, but we do have a letter that we just got that was dated December the 9th, saying that Jackson Water is reevaluating the case.
We have that letter.
Did you get the letter?
Yes.
Oh, you're the one that handed it to us. I'm sorry, I didn't see where it came from.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stokes?
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, these are poor people with no income coming in because there's no transportation. But what make it worse, this is how my place on the agenda, simply because they need to be made whole in Mississippi legal terms. They need to be paid. Now, they're calling the Miller of Jackson Water and the City of Jackson fight, well, one saying, we don't have to pay, and one saying, we not going to pay. But the person getting squeezed and hurt is Ms. Jackson, her husband. So I hope that the City of Jackson would recognize that the right thing to do is for these people to be paid. It's not illegal for them to be paid. Let's pay them through the City of Jackson, and then let the City of Jackson get their money from Jackson Water. But don't squeeze these people. They've been squeezed long enough, and every time she comes, she crying, about to cry, and, you know, it's just not fair that because of nothing, they did wrong, they're the ones that's being punished. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. Mr. Wright, do you know who the attorney is for Jackson Water? They're asking who that is. And I don't know.
Louis Wright, CAO. I do not know who the attorney is for Jackson Water, but I think this was discussed by Jackson Water, and they're in the process of taking care of that. This is the situation on the corner of University Parkway at Battlefield? Yes, they, we will contact Jackson Water just to make sure that they are taking care of this particular situation that you raised here at the council meeting.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Thank you. And we're sorry this has taken so long, Ms. Jackson. We're sorry.
Madam President?
Yes.
Could we ask Mr. Wright what kind of timeframe? Will you contact Ms. Tisdale, Ms. Jackson, and let them know that today y'all will have a conversation with them so they'll know when they can expect their check, because they looked for it before Christmas?
Okay.
And now we almost at Valentine.
Let me check with Jackson Water, and I will get back with you, Ms. Tisdale.
Okay, we appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Ms. Tisdale. All right, Thomas Cheatham is here to talk to us about the railroad at Grove Park. Mr. Cheatham?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Thomas Cheatham, Jr., and I'm here to speak on behalf of recreational in the city of Jackson. In 1956, we had no recreation area for Negroes in the city of Jackson. Alan C. Thompson and our other man went out looking and seeking for areas, for recreational areas for Negroes in the city of Jackson. The first one they looked at was at the corner of Delta Drive, once, now Mega Ever, 49 Mega Ever, and Northside Drive. But there was a lot of white folk living in that area. They said that they didn't want no Negro, they didn't call them Negroes, they called them something else in their area at night. So therefore, they went and seek and look for another recreation area in the city of Jackson at its current location. Ladies and gentlemen, they had a underpass that we used for years, and I have a picture of 2017, January, when they were closing that underpass. You know, it seemed like to me that the peoples on the west side and the peoples on the east side care more about their peoples than the peoples of the city of Jackson, the leaders of the city of Jackson. They went to Clinton Boulevard, they dug a hole down there, big enough for an underpass to go, and you can put a transfer truck underneath there. That's not the only thing they did. They went to, on the east, in Madison County. They did the same thing from Regalum. They were moving peoples out of Jackson into Regalum. And they did the same thing at Tugalo. They built two underpasses, overpasses there. They got sense enough to do that in those two areas I mentioned. The city of Jackson ought to have sense enough not to cover up that underpass there at Grove Park. Ladies and gentlemen, we want that park opened up. We want that underpass, rather, opened up. It does not seem like, seem right that we have to be the one that has to suffer. You all made the decision. I think Yarborough was the mayor during that time, made the decision. But you all was the one, the city of Jackson was the one that covered that overpass up. So the city of Jackson, you got a job to do. We expect you to do it. If it not, come election time, we need to send every one of y'all home. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Lee Bernard, who wants to offer thank you, acknowledge, and acknowledgement. Mr. Bernard?
Good morning. My name is Lee Bernard, and good morning again, council. I just want to warn, I want to just thank the constituent services for the job they did on Forest Hill Road. We had a cut all the way across Forest Hill Road that I believe the water department did some time ago, and constituent services took care of that. I just want to thank you for that. The other part I want to bring up again is that we still have issues in Brookwood, where we have a bridge that's falling in down there, in addition to a hole that's in the back. But I will call constituent services and mention that to them. But thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bernard. We appreciate you bringing that to our attention. Next, we have Reverend Ernest Smith, who wants to talk about Grove Park.
Just want to say good morning to everyone. I just want to thank God for this opportunity to be here. And I just want to say a few words about Vernon Addition, about that viaduct being closed out. You know, as a citizen of Vernon Addition, I didn't even know they was closing it off. And then it leads right into Grove Ball Golf Course. And I just want to know why we wasn't notified that they was going to close it off, and just the citizens of Vernon Addition. There's so much going on in the city of Vernon Addition that we not notified about, told anything about, it just be done. We need to be letting known what's going on in the city of Jackson. And there's so much going on, like in Vernon Addition, we got old abandoned houses not being taken care of, cars, are they bringing in car lots on the streets on Boogaty Washington? And I just want to know who going to be held accountable for opening back up this golf course and open this viaduct back up? It need to be open because it's an outlet into Shady Oak, back into Vernon Addition. And I just would like to know if you all could find the heart to open it back up, because it's a historic place there. It's been there, it's the first black golf course in Jackson, Mississippi. And now since it been shut down, it's just a garbage dump over there. So I hope you all can see nothing you all harsh to open the viaduct back up.
Mr. Griselle?
Thank you, Madam President. And I wanted to respond to Mr. Cheatham as well, but I've lived right along that golf course for 45 years. I'm impacted by that every single day, and it remains a priority of mine, not only to see that park thrive and the golf course thrive, but also to make sure that that viaduct is reopened.
Yes.
I've been to DC, I've talked to Senator Wicker, Senator Wicker. I've talked to Senator Smith's team, I've talked to Congressman Thompson, I've talked to Congressman Guest, and I've also met with our federal lobbyists to try to work on a railroad elimination grant to get that whole thing just removed from that community, because we deserve better.
That's right.
They've done it over in Pearl, they took it above ground over at Tugalo, and I think we can do the same thing in that area.
Yes.
But I just want to reassure you that that remains a priority of mine. I began this fight when the Keith Stamps sat in this seat.
Yes.
You can Google it, it's all in Clarion Legend, okay? And I'm not going to stop whether I'm in this seat or not, because we deserve better in that community.
Amen.
And we're going to get it reopened, one way or the other. Even if we have to reroute some things, we got to get it open. Thank you. Coach Cheatham, you hear me? Coach Cheatham, you hear me? You hear me? You didn't hear me. I'm still in the fight for Grove Park and to get that viaduct reopened. We got to have that over there.
That's what you going to do.
That's what I'm doing. I've been doing it. It doesn't happen overnight, sir, but we working on it.
Okay, Mr., it's, okay, thank you. We discuss it a lot, he brings it up a lot, I can, a lot in city council. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, first and foremost, good morning to everyone. Mr. Cheatham, as Mr. Griselle stated, he has been consistent in this fight. He and I have talked on several occasions. I've been with him, with Congressman Thompson. The city, to make sure that everyone knows the history of this, the city never approved, the city was never a part of the process that closed that viaduct. Well, there was, first of all, that was before our administration. There was an individual, right, who worked within the city who did not respond to the claim. The city operates through its council and through the administration. The administration, and this was a previous administration, our administration had no hands on this, but I have to tell the truth, the administration never gave approval, and the council never voted on it, right? Now, that being the case, you know, sometimes it's not as important who's responsible for the problem, and it's more important who's responsible for its fix, right? And so, in addition to those discussions, we also have a lawsuit that we've levied against the rail company. Unfortunately, that does not happen overnight, right? In addition to that lawsuit, because we don't know whether that will be successful or not, we are in constant discussions with our Public Works Department to look at alternatives, right? So that we don't have the problem that we had in the first place, right? I don't want to speak to what that problem is, because I don't want that to be taken in our litigation and used against our position, right? But I want you to know that on several fronts, you know, we may not, where we're guilty is that we don't talk about it enough. Where we're guilty is that we don't let you know that we're still fighting and we're still in the litigation enough, right? And you, as a resident, deserve to know that we're still fighting and still in litigation. We had a protracted litigation about, with an insurance company for, ever since my father was mayor, and it didn't get settled until a year ago, right? So sometimes litigation takes some time, but we understand what the community is dealing with, and we're fighting for it. We also, and you can talk to our Public Works Director, I mean, our Public Works Director, our Parks and Rec Director, one of the areas of priority for me, right, was to invest in the Grove Park area. This council agreed and put $1.3 million towards Grove Park, that that work is supposed to start this year, right? That's money that we put in the budget for Grove Park. You know this, like anybody else, I am a Grove Park kid, right? I played baseball at that park. I know your sacrifice for the community. I know how long you've been an advocate for children and what a park can do for a community. So we're not going to allow that to go by the wayside, and we're still fighting, not only for that viaduct, but for that entire community.
Okay, thank you. We're, Mr. Cheatham, we're going to move on. Mr. Cheatham, you're not on the record. Thank you. All right, no, y'all, we are going to move on. We're moving on. Mr. Mayor, one of the first things I said this morning is that we're not going to have a lot of talking during public comment because of the extreme heat in this room. I'm worried about people passing out. And so, we are going to move on and get to the agenda. We could open the doors, that's a great idea. All right, colleagues, let's go ahead and move up item number 33. I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules so that we can take up item 33. We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of suspending the rules? Mr. Hartley?
All right.
Okay, and because we can see you, you can just raise your hand. Thank you for, thank you for keeping your picture on. All right, so would the clerk please read the item? Oh, no, this is just a presentation. Joe Washington, Mr. Stokes?
Madam President, in this city, we had a preacher who almost lost his life. Had a routine stopping at the store, get peppermints, where he go to his church to preach. And he ran into a gang of hoodlums. They had been robbing churches, stealing cars, and they were in the process of stealing his car. He told them, he said, you going to take my car? Then one came from the other side with a gun, but they didn't know he was a deputy sheriff, and he protected his property. And he could tell in that Christian experience, I'm just trying to rephrase, but he looked for the security guard for some help. He said he looked for the security guard, he had took off Red Cross, Mega Ever Boulevard behind Church of Chicken. Joe Washington fought them all by himself. And I smiled, excuse me, because when you're a man of God, you must trust God. God protected his life, he could have easily been killed. And today, we want to present a plaque that we have for Reverend Joe Washington. We named it after Reverend Jesse Sutton, Big Sutton, Big Daddy Sutton, who was one of those warriors, coached the kids football, Blackburn, West Side. And now we have somebody like Joe Washington, who, a preacher, who's leading the way to protect citizens in this city and telling people, don't be scared in Jackson. And we want to thank the chief of police and everyone else who came to help, but it's a blessing to have a preacher standing up. We as Reverend Washington meet the podium.
Reverend Washington, on behalf of the citizens throughout the city of Jackson and the state of Mississippi, we would like to present to you the Reverend Jesse Sutton, Big Sutton Award for being an outstanding, not just preacher, citizen in this community, and a pastor at Old Stranger's Home Baptist Church. We want to thank you for fighting for this city. Thank you so much. We want to thank you for fighting. It's a good city, and we can't let bad folks, let the devil win, because you let him ride, he going to want to drive. Yes, sir. So we want to present you this plaque before we can put this in, and ask you to say some words of appreciation to us all. God bless you.
First, I'd like to give honor to God for waking up this morning, giving me all my activities, all my limbs, able to walk out on another day. And I want to thank the council, Kenny Stokes and the council, for thinking enough for me to giving me this, giving me this here. I want to say Reverend Pastor Jesse Sutton, his father, the one ordained me. Jesse Sutton Senior, he ordained me, and I've been at Old Stranger's Home ever since. We getting ready to celebrate 100, over 135 years church anniversary. I've been there 36 years with no scandals. Say amen? Because I tell people this, I'm not just a pastor of Old Stranger's Home, I'm the community pastor. Are you listening? I'm going to say this, and I'm going to sit down. When the water went out, me and my people got water, drove down Mill Street, all in that area, and gave out water, okay? When the garbage strike went out, I took my truck and my trailer and my people, and we went through the neighborhood and picked up all of the garbage. Are you listening? This what pastors do, see, everybody ain't a leader. Are y'all listening? Leaders are not voted in, they are not made, they are born. Are you listening? Leaders have to be people that sacrificed their life. Huh? You got to be a lamb. Huh? Dr. King was a lamb. Meg Evans was a lamb. Am I right? They sacrificed their lives, that, look where y'all at. Huh? When you thought Jackson would have a black man, councilman, I'm 73 years old. Are you listening? But God blessed me and give me the knowledge to take care of my people. All people, we are somebody. Let us come together as a whole. Dr. King said, we're in white and black, let's come together. Am I right? We too separated in Jackson. Are you listening? We too separated in Jackson. We ain't got nothing for our children to do but shoot pistols and steal cars and kill one another. I'm tired of it. I bear most of it when they get killed. And I get tired of looking in the ocean, seeing families crying. The same young men that tried to hijack me, I was at a funeral when I got through preaching at funeral. His auntie came up and told me, said, I want to speak to you, ma'am. I said, yes, ma'am. She said, that was one of my son, that 14-year-old, that was my nephew. I said, really? I said, ma'am, I don't blame it on him. Are y'all listening? I blame it on the mothers, fathers, aunties, and uncles. How many got whooped by your auntie? How many got beat by your uncle? Am I right? It's a family affair. Huh? I got whooped by school teachers. Are you listening? You got the discipline, and you got to be a leader. Huh? You got to sacrifice yourself to be a leader. I thank you all for giving me this, keep on fighting for the community, y'all keep on praying for me. Would you do that? And every now and then, stop at Old Stranger's Home, we a little creek, we at the on the creek. We ain't, we just an old country church in this city. Everybody is somebody. Ms. Verge, I remember when you came back.
I've been there.
Honey, I remember when you came back.
You got good, you got good music, too.
So y'all come by and see us.
Thank you.
Be blessed.
Thank you.
Y'all be blessed.
I feel like I've been to church right now.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Banks?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President, real quick. Reverend Joey, first of all, I just want, this is Banks, just want to thank you and Councilman Stokes. and Councilman Stokes, want to thank you for this award. Uh, and for those that don't know, you know, and, and I giggle because Joey is like this all the time. He's been like this ever since I've known him. That's way back when I was five-year-old and you were playing the drums for the Golden Nuggets at Max Barber Shop.
Come on, come on.
But, um, you know, I just, I just want to, again, just say, "Look, we appreciate your leadership. Keep doing what you're doing, and hopefully, I'll see you later when you come get your coon."
I want you to say, "This is my body, guys. This is my alma mater." He go, "Well, this young man got a testimony. Look at his hands, look at his hands. He promised God that if they didn't take his alma, that he'll be at church every Sunday. He jumped out of one to save his life. He been with me ever since. Him will with God, baby. How many believe in him, brother? Y'all be with him all the time."
Thank you so much, and thank you, Mr. Stokes. All right, we're gonna get back to the regular, to the consent agenda. Clerk?
All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Any, uh, we, I'm assuming there are no questions or comments? All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. We have now ordinance this regular agenda. We're moving on now to claims. Clerk?
Order approving claims appearing at pages 212, to inclusive thereon, a municipal document of claims in the amount of $13,420,187.75 for making appropriation for the payment thereof.
So moved.
Second.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Um, I don't, excuse me, just one minute. Every time I have my mic on, there's some sort of weird echo. I might be the one that's a little hot today, but anyway, in more ways than one. But, um, so, thank you, if we could adjust that a little. Um, all right, Mr. Malinbecker, would you please go over larger claims?
Good morning. Fidelis Malinbecker, CFO. Uh, the following represent the four largest claims on this docket. They are as follows. First, U.S. Bank in the amount of $3,318,968.75 paid out of Fund 386, Series 2021 General Obligation Refunding Bonds. This is for the principal and interest payment, March 2025. Second is U.S. Bank in the amount of $3,072,750.00 paid out of Fund 315, Convention Refunding Series 2013A. This is for the principal and interest payment for March 2025. Third is Colagic LLC in the amount of $635,515.00 paid out of Fund 476, Simmons Settlement Fund. This is for the CAD, RMS, JMS, and Mobile Field Reporting Systems. And the fourth is Regions Bank in the amount of $614,743.19 paid out of Funds 10, Fire Protection, and Fund 4, Tech Fund. This is for the lease payments for March 2025.
Thank you. Uh, colleagues, any questions or comments on claims? Hearing none, all in favor? Did we lose Mr. Hartley? And I knew he was coming deliberately. All right, he's gone. All right, so it is a vote of four in favor and two opposed. All right, we're moving on now to payroll.
Order approving gross payroll, including payroll deduction claims, number 312462, and make an appropriation for the payment thereof.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? It's a vote of 6-0. Thank you, colleagues. Um, next item, please.
Order authorizing the Department of Finance and Administration to pay professional association dues and travel-related expenses for various organizations for year 2025.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? It's a vote of 6-0. Thank you. Item nine.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the service agreement with Lumens Armored U.S. LLC Lumens for the purpose of adding two additional pickup locations for a total of three pickup locations.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. We did have a lengthy discussion on this during work session yesterday. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? I'm sorry? Okay, so we have, uh, five in favor and, uh, Ms. Lee, uh, Ms. Kosh, I'm forgetting. Ms. Clay is abstaining. Item 10?
Order authorizing a ma, order authorizing municipal clerk and the clerk of council to pay membership dues for various organizations necessary to the performance of their duties for the city of Jackson.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
I'm in favor.
Okay, it's a vote of 6-0. Item 11?
Order authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the city of Jackson, Mississippi, and Heinz County, Mississippi, related to the 2025 municipal, municipal elections.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. We also discussed this in work session. Any more questions or comments about this item? Hearing none, all in favor? It's a vote of 6-0. Thank you.
Take your phone.
Excuse me a minute. Item 12?
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a technical support agreement with Pharaoh's Consulting Services to provide the city of Jackson with election consulting services for assistant training and support in the statewide election management system during the 2025 municipal election.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? It's a vote of 6-0. Next, item 12, please.
Order authorizing the mayor to ratify the submission of the city of Jackson's application and acceptance of the FY 2024 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant, JAG, and to enter into an interlocal cooperative agreement between the city of Jackson, Mississippi, and Heinz County, Mississippi, to utilize F1 2024 JAG funds to purchase equipment and patrol vehicles.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Any questions or comments? Yes, or Mr. Stokes?
Good morning, Juan Gray Grants, JPD.
In the past, how much did we, what the city? In the past, how much was the city's portion of this grant versus the county? And what plans do we have if we approve this year?
Um, normally, we don't set the allocation. Allocation is set from the feds. Um, whatever they give us, the county only receives $30,000 of it.
That's what I'm saying. In the past, what, what would we normally get?
Um, between $250,000 to $260,000.
And that's for the city, not the counties?
Well, $30,000 of whatever that total amount is goes to the county. There's no match to it whatsoever.
Okay. Do we have any plans, what we wish it is, so to speak, that we hope?
Well, this is the only grant where we can buy vehicles. So, we typically buy vehicles with this grant. We do, and the county also.
That's what I'm saying. Thank you, and Chief, I want to thank you and all of the department that came to the, uh, to the parade, kicking off Black History Month. Make a big difference when poor neighborhood kids can see the Chief of Police.
Thank you.
It make a big difference, it inspire them. If the only thing they see are dope boys, then they want to be dope boys. But when they can see the Chief of Police and other police officers, it make them be, want to be law-abiding citizens and try to reach to be the chief one day. That's how we're gonna recruit police officers coming out of the poor neighborhoods.
Thank you. Uh, Chief of Police Joseph Wade, it is absolutely our honor to be out in the community, working with the adults and especially the youth in our community. We had a great event at Jackson State University Friday where kids from Lanier High School, Jim Hill High School, and JSU students were there to talk to me and to share. So, absolutely, we're on board with our youth in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Madam President.
Sure, thank you. Um, all right, all, all in favor? It's a vote of 6-0. Item 14?
Order authorizing the mayor to apply for the FY 2026 State of Mississippi Department of Public Safety and Mississippi Office of Highway Safety Grant and Implementation Program, Occupy Protection, Police DUI Officers, and Dispatch Traffic Service, Traffic Services, and if awarded, to authorize the mayor to execute all documents to accept said grant.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, Mr. Hartley?
He raised his hand.
We're voting on, we're on item 14. Okay. All right, it's a vote, it's a vote of 7-0. Thank you. Um, item 15?
Order authorizing the repeal of the August 8, 2020, order prohibiting the use of facial recognition technology by the Jackson Police Department.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. We discussed it a good bit yesterday during work session. Are there any additional questions or comments?
Yes.
Mr. Stokes?
Thank you. Chief, can you just explain, uh, why we're repealing this item and how it all go?
Absolutely. Joseph Wade, Chief of Police, this is a tool that's been utilized across the country to solve cases from New York to Los Angeles, California. In 2020, my understanding, there was an order put in place by the city council to essentially not allow us to be able to utilize that technology. The state of Mississippi utilizes it, Department of Public Safety, NBI, Homeland Security, and all of our federal partners utilize facial recognition. We understand the narrative about the accuracy. We understand that. But we do also understand that a lot of time when we're talking about Amber Alerts, the individuals that are pillaging our community, we need to know who that person is. And this, this is going to enable us to respond quicker, have a more rapid response as to the identification of this person. We understand that that alone is not going to be adequate enough to make an arrest. It is a tool in our toolbox, such as a, similar to a fingerprint, gunshot residue, or even a, uh, you know, a situation where somebody has admitted to committing a crime. We know it has to be corroborating information, more than one thing, but this will force us to come in line with the rest of the country as we move toward 21st century law enforcement technology. We have cameras all around the city, right? And we're not gonna be able to just look at a footage of, "Hey, that's so-and-so, I know him." We don't have that ability. But now, with that picture, and that's be a good picture, it's gonna go through a database, whether it's a public domain or whether it is law enforcement sensitive, you know, far as mug shots and stuff like that, it will have certain indicators like nose, eyes, cheekbones to give us identification on who that person is.
Do we currently have people on staff who know how to manage this kind of technology with our people?
We are moving forward with, uh, policy as it relates to this. We know that this requires oversight, and it, uh, requires a certain direction as we move forward. I am willing to sit down with City Legal to come up with a policy as we deal with this. But this is not technology that a regular patrol officer is going to have. This is part of our intelligence unit. These are people that are specially trained in dealing with social media, scrubbing the internet every single day, and working with our state and federal partners to identify who these bad actors are here in the city of Jackson.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Madam President.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chief. Any other questions or comments, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, just briefly, um, I just want to say to those that are listening that, that we fundamentally believe that we have a chief who is community-oriented.
Yes.
Uh, that he understands the interest and the concerns of community. Uh, this ordinance came at a time where we were building the city's first office, I mean, uh, first real-time command center, utilizing 21st century technology. And I remember it correctly, I think it was Councilman Dekeather Stamps, uh, that raised the issue of the accuracy of this technology. Uh, and I think it was a valid concern, right? Uh, and it remains a valid concern because while our communities want to be protected and safe, we also don't want to be, uh, inaccurately targeted. And so, what the chief has committed to, and I think that this is, uh, a, a good solution, uh, he's committed to a policy that informs the way that JPD uses this technology. Uh, he has had a conversation with Dr. Omari. He's committed to even possibly working with organizations like the ACOU and the Center for Justice, right? In the formation of that policy or suggestions on that policy. Uh, so I don't want community members that may be fearful, uh, that the city of Jackson is turning a corner and going to target them in an unjust way. That is not our intent, uh, and we're going to work to put safeguards in place so that does not happen. Uh, but we want to make certain that those that protect and serve us each and every day have all the tools at their disposal to do their jobs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, Mr. Hartley. It's, it's a unanimous vote. All right, colleagues, item eight, uh, 16?
Order ratifying and authorizing the payment of $2,945 to the Mississippi State Fire Academy for professional, professional services and training for the Jackson Fire Department and its firefighters.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Item 17?
Order ratifying and accepting proposals from MCI Constructions LLC and Johnson Controls for the professional services performed at Thaw Mamara Hall and authorizing payment in the amount of $64,899.95.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Item 18 is being pulled. Do we know if it'll be on the next agenda?
Yes, um, Mr. Muhammad would like for this to be placed on the next agenda.
Okay, thank you. All right, item 19?
Order ratifying procurement of parts and repair services from various vendors by the Department of Public Works Municipal Garage and authorizing payment to said vendor.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? It's unanimous. Item 20?
Order accepting the term bid of Rotolo Consultants, Inc. for a 12-month contract for city cemetery grounds maintenance with tw, with two 12-month options to extend, bid number 95820-112124.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? We talked about this length yesterday. Any more comments or com, questions? Hearing none, all in favor? It's unanimous.
No, 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 Madam President.
Oh, you voted, oh, opposed. I'm sorry, I thought you pressed your hand. Opposed, okay, we have one, uh, we have one opposition, and that's Mr. Stokes. Mr., so it's a vote of six to one. Yes, Mr.?
Yes, just, just briefly, uh, because I don't want to miss an opportunity while residents are looking. We did have a robust discussion about this, and one of the challenges we're having, we know that there are a lot of people in our community that know how to cut grass, have grass-cutting companies, right? Uh, but they may not be as informed to how to submit a bid. The city of Jackson cannot award you any type of work unless you submit a proper bid in, in a process like this, right? So, uh, our solid waste division, who is in control of the grass-cutting work, they are, um, going to host a, um, they're gonna host a community meeting to discuss how you submit a bid so that you can be informed. For all the people who stopped me in the street or stopped council members, you know, different places and say you want to be able to work with the city, you have to come to things like that so that you understand how to submit a bid and work for the city, okay? It works to our benefit to employ you.
Okay, thank you. And I allowed that outside of an item being on the floor because I think that was an important message. Item 21?
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of agreement between the Mississippi Transportation Commission and the city of Jackson for reconstruction of the Dixie Road Bridge at Lynch, Lynch Creek Tributary, STP-827900005109861-701000.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item, colleagues? We have a motion and a second on this item, colleagues. Any questions or comments? Mr. Foot?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam President. The, my question, and it applies to number, item twenty-two and twenty-three as well, both, all these ridges, or all of them are construction, where we're getting funds from the Mississippi Transportation Commission. And it says in here on the second paragraph, one point two one three in federal funds, one point two one three million in federal funds, eighty percent grant match and twenty percent local match. So I'm, my question is, where are we getting the twenty percent local match? Which fund does that come out of?
Can someone answer that question? Oh, Mr. Wright?
Yes, CAO. The twenty percent is coming from the city through our modernization fund. Yes. One seventy-three, and that is? One percent infrastructure.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
Yes.
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes?
Has one percent already voted on these items?
They voted on part of it in terms of the design work, the CE and I portion of it. We are going back to one percent on some other parts of it in terms of the, once we bid it out and get the exact cost of what the construction will be on these.
There has been a commitment from one percent to support this project. The, the pattern is until we get an actual contract that is bid out, that's when they vote on those type of matters.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you. It's unanimous. Item twenty-two.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of agreement between the Mississippi Transportation Commission and the city of Jackson for reconstruction of the McClure Road Bridge at Caney Creek Tributary, STP dash seven two eight seven dash zero 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 one one zero nine eight six zero dash seven zero one zero zero zero.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Any questions or comments?
I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
And it's not regarding this item. Shaw Road, Shaw Road and Norman Street, the, the issues there, can you briefly tell me, give me an update on that?
Sure. The Louis Wright, CAO, the Shaw Road Bridge has been given to a engineering firm to design the work.
Okay.
We have those designed, this, and it's one hundred percent completion. And we're at a point now of advertising for a construction company to bid on that project. So it is in the hopper to get that road or that bridge completed.
Thank you. Norman Street?
Norman Street is, is it in the same way?
Same way. Got it. Thank you.
We have several bridges around the city that we're working on through one percent that are in various stages of design or advertising to get done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stokes?
Thank you. Mr. Wright, I received a call from, from the pastor Cherry Grove asking about, I don't know if he called you, asking about Reverend Williams Bridge on Marlothe King. What's the status of it?
The Louis Wright, CAO, the MLK Bridge, as you know, was advertised last year. And we did not have any bidders on that particular bridge because the way it was designed. And it's designed in such a way that they have to drive pylons into the ground and to put those, that equipment in, there's a transmission line just above it. So they went back and redesigning that bridge to be a culvert. And, and as a result of that, we're in the process now of getting those final design plans so that we can advertise and get more bidders to bid on that particular bridge.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Have we, Mr. Hartley? Okay, we've lost Mr. Hartley.
There he is.
Oh, there he is. Mr. Hartley, vote on number twenty-two. You just, you're muted, Mr. Hartley. You're muted.
He's been showing his hand.
Okay, thank you. He gave up. All right, so it's unanimous. All right, item twenty-three.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of agreement between the Mississippi Transportation Commission and the city of Jackson for the overlay of McDowell Road Extension Raymond Road to Suncrest Drive, STP dash eight two eight eight dash zero 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 five one zero nine eight five nine dash seven zero one zero zero zero.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Mr. Hartley? Okay, thank you. It's unanimous. Wait, did he say yes? I thought he said, yeah.
He said, I.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley. All right, item twenty-four.
Resolution of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi supporting the reopening of the railroad Vadoch intersecting Walter Welch, Dutch Welch Drive.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a, a motion and a second on this item. Mr. Stokes?
Thank you. Madam President, we have the Neighborhood Association president here, who will speak from Shady Oaks. Mr. Brumfield, if you are speaking, let us know why it's so important and that most of the people, they're still alive. And that's why you want to try to get this, come on, Mr. Brumfield, that's why we're trying to get this as soon as we can to court for. Some eyewitnesses died because the man was exactly right. It was never approved by the city, was never approved by the city council, yet it was closed. And that's why it's so important that we correct this wrong, Mr. Brumfield.
Welcome, and please state your name for the record.
Byron Brumfield, and I'm the founder of Make Every Reloaded, a mission and a movement. Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, City Council. And usually I come talk and try to badge you or try to, you know, but this year I'm moving differently. I'm preaching unity and we, we ain't, we don't need to talk about the problem. We need to work together and handle the problem. And that's a start. One reason is because, you know, you got the senior citizens that they route to, to the Meadowbrook over there. That was one of their routes. But they can't get there if they got to go this way, got to go that way. Because they don't, either way you go, north side drive or you come around to Livingston Road, the train is still on the track. And then you got the first responders. And I think they finna build a new community around there somewhere. And so they definitely, another reason to get it open for the more, the first responders to get around. And also, it just, it, it, and people who go into their morning commute on the way to work about six thirty in the morning, it's a problem around through there. Twelve o'clock is a problem around there, and also between four and six o'clock. So them three reasons right now that we need to figure out what's going on. And not just that, you can go to any golf court, golf course or anywhere around Mississippi, and you don't, you don't see them closed down, whether it's Byron, Clinton, or Jackson, or anywhere else. So we need to, we need to come together and we need to make this happen. I mean, it's been ten years and everybody keep hollering about it. We've been working on it. If, if y'all can't hurry up and make it work, let us know if it's going to be ten more years before it's open. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, Mr. Stokes?
Thank you. Madam President, the, the first time this issue came forward was when Harvey Johnson was the mayor. And they met with constituent services and they met with Robert Walls and all these people live who can verify what I'm saying. And they asked for permission to clean it up, widen it, and everything else. And from there to when they decided to close it, bury it, and everything else without any permission from the city, it has been devastating to Shady Oaks, Vernon Edition, and those communities.
Barely.
No growth. Houses that would normally sell quickly are now abandoned. Golf courses have slowly become a dump. The end of the street is crying. And schools are closed, the seminary are closed, Jean Smith closed. You know, people just bid their golf course for the activities they, every day, average-day people. That's the lifeline. And as Shady Oaks slowly die, you can see Vernon Edition slowly dying. And people in some parts of Vernon Edition recognize that thundering is growing and they have a sign where it's coming across West Street. And people in Vernon Edition are concerned. Their golf courses need to be reopened, but that Vadoch need to be reopened yesterday. And that's why we keep placing an item on the agenda for us to vote on. So as people change, the record will stay the same. And that record is desensitized, open the Vadoch. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Banks?
Yes, Madam President, just have a motion to amend this to add another, therefore, and basically the amendment reads, therefore be it resolved that the clerk of counsel sends a copy of this resolution to all federal representation necessary. That's my motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Mr. Hartley is, there he is. Okay, I have his hand raised. It's unanimous. Thank you. All right, so now the item is before us as amended. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Stokes.
Thank you. I'm sort of just battling the man for the votes. Yeah.
All right, item twenty-five.
Order accepting quotes from Lockdown Construction LLC in the amount of seven thousand eight hundred fifty dollars to repair the entrance to the Meadowbrook Oak subdivision, authorizing payment upon completion of work.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Uh, colleagues, any question? We did discuss it yesterday. Any additional questions or comments? Mr. Foot?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to encourage my, my colleagues to support this measure. It's been a long time coming, but our city attorney worked hard on it. And I appreciate the administration getting it forward to, so we can vote on it with the hopes of getting this repaired quickly. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Foot. All right, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Colleagues, we are now moving into discussion items. It is about a hundred, for those of you outside of this room, it is about a hundred degrees in here. And so, colleagues, I am going to ask that we keep discussion items to a minimum. I want to ask the city attorney, is there going to be any reason for us to go into executive session today?
He looks like trouble.
Drew Martin, city attorney, regretfully say yes. I'm sorry, we got, we got three.
Oh, okay.
None along, but, but we got, we got three.
All right, number twenty-six, Mr. Foot, is yours. Hotel O.
Thank you, Madam President. This is sort of the poster child for dilapidated properties, or abandoned properties. It's not quite abandoned, but it's close to it in Jackson. And, and I think the citizens would really be encouraged if we could get work started on this. I know it's been back and forth between MDEQ and, I guess, the construction firm, if I'm not mistaken, that is involved. If, and I wanted to see if we could get an update on where we stand and what's the timeframe on when work will begin on demolition.
Drew Martin, city attorney, I do have an update on that. So the, the, what the holdup since about December was, just a review on this, was that the cities, the people that needed from the city to go out and complete sampling that could be tested for asbestos, their certifications had lapsed. And so it's taken a few weeks, but those certifications have been renewed. MDEQ has reissued the licenses. They've been back out to the hotel and taken the samples. And yesterday, the samples and the associated documentation, documents, excuse me, were sent to the lab that will conduct that testing. The testing typically takes about five days to get those results back. So with luck, we'll have them back this week. If those tests come back negative, then, those tests will also be sent to MDEQ, by the way. That's what they're waiting on. If those tests come back negative, we expect to be able to proceed immediately. If they come back positive, then we still should be able to proceed, but we'll have to move to the next bidder, which we still have. We've already gotten that process. We don't have to redo any of it. So we're, we are getting closer and closer to the finish line and seeing action done. I hate to say a timeframe, but if I understand the process properly, if we have negative test results come back on the sampling, then we'll be able to issue a notice to proceed within the next few days or a week or so.
All right, thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Just for clarity, the reason that we would have to go to another bidder if the tests come back positive is because the winning bidder, the lowest bidder, did not actually have a, a cost associated with remediation of asbestos. So that's why we have to go to the next.
All right, thank you. All right, any other discussion?
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Hartley?
Madam President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Hartley.
Yes, I will ask Attorney Martin about the property on Babarash Boulevard and over near the interstate.
Mr. Hartley, could you?
Any update on that?
Could you please ask him at another time? Because it is so hot in here and we just want to stick to the discussion items. Thank, I, I, I know you don't, don't know, and lucky you. All right, so number twenty-seven, roll-off dumpster days, Mr. Foot?
Thank you, Madam President. I've gotten a number of calls from, from citizens who are frustrated with the scheduling of roll-off dumpster days and then changing the schedules and they're, they're, I was wondering if, if the solid waste folks could give us a, a sort of primer on how the roll-off dumpster days are done? Is there's an opportunity to have them other locations than just at, at the metro center? And, you know, the, the drill that they, the citizens need to know in order so they can participate in the roll-off dumpster days?
Lakeisha Weather, Solid Waste, well, you asked several questions. Roll-off dumpster day, unfortunately, the schedule has to be changed often due to the limitations of the equipment that we have and personnel, to be honest. However, we will have a roll-off dumpster day, February the twenty, what's the second, is it twenty-second? We will have one this month. Right now, we will remain at the metro center. For one, it's closest to the transfer station, which allows us to get back and forth faster for dumping the dumpsters and emptying the trash. But right now, we're going to stick to that one location.
Okay, so, so is it every week? So the, so on the February twentieth, you got, you got one scheduled for February twenty-second?
Yes.
What, what's the next one after that? Do you have that scheduled?
The roll-off dumpster days are typically scheduled the second Saturday of every month.
The second? So this case, it's the third Saturday, but, but it's going to be typically the second Saturday?
Yes, sir. We had to reschedule because we did not have our trucks.
So where can they check to, to see, you know, in other words, instead of showing up there and finding out it's been postponed, where, where, is there a phone number or a website they can go to find out?
We prefer that they go to the website, and that website is currently being updated. But they can contact us in the office at six zero one nine six zero eleven ninety-three.
Eleven ninety-three?
Yes.
Okay.
Our comms department, Lakeisha, if, you know, if in the event that we have any website issues, and I just had a conversation about that, if you have any issues with that, let's go through our comms department so that we can make the announcements of any changes.
Okay, thank you. All right, anything else on that item?
Not for me.
All right. Mr. Stokes is holding his two items. Discussion update on Thalima Mara Hall. Mr. Martin, I wanted you to give everybody just a brief update on where we are with that. Thank you.
Drew Martin, city attorney, the, the brief update is, we spoke to the state fire marshal last week. The, the city is in the process of completing some, what are fairly minor cleanups that had not, that had been scheduled but not yet completed, that are necessary to get into full fire code compliance. The major issues that remain are that there has to be hydrostatic testing done on the fire sprinkler and alarm system. That's a test that's done together to make sure that when there's an alarm, the sprinklers turn on and the fire is put out. That's being scheduled. Elevator and escalator still need to be inspected, and the past maintenance reports for those need to be provided to the, to, to the state as well, to the fire marshal. That's in the process of happening as well. There's some old invoices that are needing to be paid and cleaned up as part of that process. And then the only other issue that, that still exists is something Mr. Al Turk updated everybody on previously, which is, it'll be a, it'll be a little bit longer before the new fire curtain is custom-made and ready to be installed. But the Thalima can open and have events so long as there is a fire suppression company on site. We may even be able to do that with our fire department. We're trying to clear that to find out. If not, we'll contract with somebody.
Thank you. So do we have any potential timeline on when it might happen?
I, I don't have the timeframe. I'm just- I, I don't have the timeframe. I'm just keeping up with what's happening.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, I appreciate that, and thank you. All right, next, Mr. Hartley, litter contractor schedule?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, and, and thanks, Shanika, for unmuting me. Uh, I just wanted to find out. I have constituents asking about when are we going to have these, uh, when are the litter crews going through, uh, going through the city? Do we have a schedule? Uh, just any information, uh, concerning litter pickup?
Lakeisha Weather, Solid Waste, currently, Councilman Hartley, it's difficult to provide a schedule due to the request that we're receiving. Um, we try to make sure that they, um, work areas completely prior to moving to the next area. So currently, they're in North Jackson. They will move to West Jackson, then back to South Jackson. Um, if you would like for us to send you that schedule though, we will send it, but I cannot post a schedule because it constantly changes.
I, I appreciate if you would send me one. Also, um, uh, can you let me know when they're coming to West Jackson? Again, I have a lot of folks inquiring about litter pickup, and it's maybe not being done, and I need, I need to be able to tell them something.
No, yes, sir. Um, the litter pickup is being done. New Way is our current contractor for litter pickup. They are out working. Unfortunately, our citizens and visitors to this city, um, the, the trash that is on the ground right now almost seems intentional. Um, so it's, it's excessive. I do understand that, but they are out working diligently to remove the trash around the city of Jackson.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I just want to say this, and I, Lakeisha knows I call her all the time, uh, and, and sometimes I'm guilty of, of seeing bad areas and, you know, she tries to respond to it. Uh, I know you're working with New Way, uh, so our residents and the council is aware, New Way is an organization that, uh, employs returning citizens, formerly incarcerated individuals, and even homeless individuals, uh, to do pickup. Uh, while I think that they're certainly been helping and augmenting us for some time, uh, we can, we can use and deserve, you know, other people. So maybe if, and I guess you'd have to get with city legal so that there's not any issues with the contracts conflicting, but if we break it in the zones, right, uh, then we can start some other contracts with some other companies, uh, to get going. But, you know, charge us with how much you need and, and let's try to respond to it as best we can.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, anything else on that item? We're going to move on now, uh, to Councilwoman Clay's item. Don't litter signs with fines.
Okay. Since we're talking about all the litter in the city, and we all know there's a lot of litter in the city, I think that we should, um, consider putting up signs with the fines on it so that we can impose the fines and then see, um, take the proper steps to, um, collect money from fines and enforce it.
Uh, Lakeisha Weather, Solid Waste, there are signs posted in the city of Jackson with fines on them. They, um, I think the current signs that are out, um, if I'm not mistaken, it's 1,500. Um, but there are signs posted. I can give you the areas where they are.
There are very few.
There are very few, and currently we do not have the capability of putting out new signs, um, due to the shortage or the limitations in our sign department.
We just had a, a motion not too many days ago about temporary employees, and we just had a motion about taking all the money and vacancies and giving raises, and we can't get signs for it?
I just answered that question to the best of my ability in this moment.
We'll work to make that happen.
Okay, um, Mr. Banks was next, but Mr. Mayor, I'll let you respond to that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll say that we'll work to make that happen. That's a priority for our residents. Um, and, you know, I, I know that you're only working with what you have, but, but we will, uh, look at outside means of, of getting those signs.
Yeah, we would have to contract out those signs, which I would have to get with Mr. Mellon Beffer about funding for that. Um, but, uh, again, uh, there are signs posted. I will provide those areas for you, and if you have specific areas in your ward that you would like a sign placed, please forward that information to us.
All right, thank you. Mr. Banks?
You're welcome. Yeah, thank you. Uh, and Councilwoman Clay said that one of the key words I think that is important is enforcement. Um, you know, I, I really hope there's a way, uh, for the police department, you know, just like they do other kind of things, set up in unmarked cars, and when people throw their chicken boxes or whatever out the window, write these folk a ticket and let them know that that's not tolerated here in Jackson. I, I think it's very important that we do something. And I know you did something toward dumping, but just regular littering all the time, because the sad part about it, the sad reality is, as soon as they go out there and pick it up, the next day, it's right back out there again. And so we need, we need, we need to find ways to, you know, really enforce that.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Just quick agreement, so, uh, so that everyone's aware, and I know you were kind of alluding to this, um, Chief Wade did start a litter task force, and so there are a few officers specifically aimed at, you know, dealing with the issues of litter. Uh, the problem that we have is that the challenge is a little more rampant than, you know, uh, a few officers can, can address. Um, and so we'll work on that, and, and we've even, if you paid attention, when it came to illegal dumping, they even perp walked some individuals, right? The intention of the perp walking was so that we don't normalize or okay the behavior or a culture that says, let's dump, right? And so that's why we took that extraordinary step, but we will try to do more of that, uh, not only catch people, but, you know, shame. You know, my mother believed in the power of shame, right? If I had a bad report card, she told everybody she knew, right? And shame is, is an important tool that we need to use in, in appropriate circumstances.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Madam President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Hartley?
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
Can I have a follow up, quick question with the mayor?
Of course.
Are you, um, are, are you, um, open to having, uh, folks with, um, misdemeanors, uh, if we can agree with the, with the, with some type of judge to have them out picking up litter in order to pay off fines? Uh, Vicksburg has a program, uh, and I think that would serve two purposes. It would, uh, reduce the amount of litter, and it also discourage folks from, um, from, from, uh, littering. So are you, um, are, are you open to, uh, discussions or, or looking into, uh, having that type of program?
I'm gonna pass that along to our city attorney, Councilman Hartley.
Drew Martin, city attorney. So, so we actually are working on that right now. Uh, there's a, a joint agreement that we're trying to finish between us and Hines County and, uh, M T C in order to be able to utilize county inmates, uh, for that very purpose.
I think his question was a bit different. I'm sorry. Yeah, his question, so we, we are, yeah, you go ahead.
Uh, just Vicksburg, if you need to, to have some type of template of a successful program, the city of Vicksburg has a good program.
Yeah. The, the, the agreement that, uh, Mr. Martin is talking about is one we've been working on for some time, uh, with, uh, M, uh, Mississippi Department of Correction inmates. Uh, he's talking about misdemeanor offenders and a litter pickup program for Mr., for working off fines.
Um, and Chief, uh, we, we did meet with him about that. He was working on that program already, uh, Councilman Hartley, about, um, getting those individuals that have fines. Um, I will check back with him on that, but they were working on that program. Um, I think he, he was talking about doing it right when they put out the net team for illegal dumping. So he is working on that program, so I'll check in back with, um, check back in with him on that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anything else on that item? Thank you, Councilwoman Clay, for putting it on there. Um, Mr. Martin, we don't really have an item on here for discussion of, um, legal matters, so we need to add it. I would take, I would entertain a motion to add it.
Uh, Madam President, I move that we add, um, an item to the agenda discussion for...
All three are litigation matters?
For, discussion for litigation matters.
Second. We have a motion and a second to add this, um, legal matters to the agenda. All in favor? Okay, it's a, it's a, thank you, Mr. Hartley. It's a vote of six zero. The item is now on the floor as a discussion item. Um, but I just messed up because what we need to do very quickly is, um, before we go, actually go into executive session, Mr. Martin, I'd like to clean up everything else.
Sure.
And I apologize for that. So, what, I, do I need to take, it's, it's just a discussion item. All right, so, uh, we have on here item 34, monthly report of privileged taxes as required according to, you know, state law. Any, um, I got mine and I read it. Show of hands. Everybody else who did? Okay, it's, um, six of us raised our hands. And then, um, any announcements? I have Mr. Stokes that I will read for him. Uh, he is, uh, he wants to close the meeting in honor of Mr. Rex Harris, Mrs. Shirley Griffin Fallins, Mr. Tommy Lee Boba Fitzhugh, Mrs. Willie Jean Schuff of Bloomfield, Connecticut, and Mr. Derek Jabari Cody. Mr. Banks?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Let me just start by saying this, because I, I said I was going to do this, but I am a Dahar Atlanta Falcons fan, but congratulations to the Philadelphia Eagles. Fly Eagles, fly. I just had to say that. All right.
All right, thank you. All right, anything else, colleagues? All right, if not, we're going to go back to the added discussion item for, to discuss legal matters. We will need to go into executive session. Colleagues, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session for the purposes of discussing three legal matters.
So moved for closed session, Madam President.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Mr. Hartley, we'll need to, did you raise your hand? We'll need to, we'll need, okay, we'll need to, somebody will call you on the phone, okay? If you are not, um, a part of these discussions, I'm going to ask you... All right, um, colleagues, we are now out of execu, we, colleagues, we are now out of executive session. Is there anything else to come before this body? At, while, while we were in executive session, no official action was taken. Um, is there anything else to come before this body at this time? Not. This meeting is adjourned.